Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Mensler, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornia, Commissioner Carolina Mihia. To my left, Commissioner Rachel Grant and Commissioner Emily Klaas. We welcome our new Commissioner. Okay, we're calling this meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe that's going to be led by District One Commissioner.
Starting out the year. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the one, the United States of America.
See with land acknowledgement, Vice Chair? We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples, whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawks and Island, the Squawli and Chehalis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Sure. We have an agenda. There's been two polls of consent items since this morning. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve agenda in second. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have public comment. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate, and those guidelines are as follows. Please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the Board, not audience or staff. The Board will not respond directly to public comment. The county manager may follow up on an as-needed basis with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes and may not donate any of that time to another speaker. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board on appeal. Finally, all written material provided to the county may be considered a public record and subject to release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act. So, we've got Mr. Trowbridge signed up first with Mr. Pettit on deck.
So, my name's Brett Trowbridge. I live on Patterson Lake here in Thurston County. And nice to meet you, Commissioner Grant. I can't possibly bring you up to speed on all the things that have happened in this case, but the most recent is that Mr. Gelder resigned, and he was the person basically in charge of four different lake projects. And I thought was doing a pretty good job. We have quite a history of change of personnel. You know, just a few years ago, when this whole thing started, it was Paula Cracknell and Mr. Wilson. Then Paula Cracknell moved on to a new job. Mr. Wilson had it for a while. He finally hired a new person. That person was eventually fired, and that was because the people who were in favor of the lake projects thought that he was being too restrictive in what he was allowing. And basically, it was said that we were just going to go back to the steering committees of each of these lakes to get whatever they want, which on my lake is they wanted glyphosate and killing lily pads. So fortunately, Mr. Gelder was there and has been in the stead. And the final decision is going to be in May, and I'm wondering, according to information, who is going to be replacing Mr. Gelder? Is there any decision about that yet?
No, sir.
I'll take that as a no. I'm afraid the whole thing's just going to fall apart. You know, we have really a crisis on Lake Lawrence where the person who's been heading up the project there for 20-plus years is admitting that it's a failure and that he can't stop these algae blooms. They had, I think, four of them this year. The lake was closed most of the summer and clear into December. This is a failure. And what is the reason for this? It's sort of a 20th century thinking about how to control nature. We're in the 21st, we're into the second quarter of the 21st century. Putting glyphosate in lakes is not a good idea. Why is that? Because it kills the plants. They sink to the bottom and they rot, and they release their nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus. And what does that do? It just increases weed growth. That's exactly what weeds want, is nitrogen and phosphorus. And that's what algae wants, is phosphorus primarily. So, what happens if you have a lake that's all lily pads? Take a look. Find one. There's ponds all around like that. They don't have any algae. Well, why's that? Because the sun can't get through for the algae to grow because the lily pads get all the sun. So, what happens if you cut down lily pads or poison them is that you're increasing the availability of sunlight to get to algae, and it grows. And now, mind you, all algae is not bad. In fact, we have a very alive ecosystem on my lake with all sorts of living things, and the whole food chain is based on algae. You know, the small creatures eat the algae, and the slightly bigger creatures eat the ones that ate the algae. And if you want to eliminate algae from a lake like mine, you're killing nine-tenths of the wildlife. And it doesn't do any good for the blue-green algae. We can see that no matter how many of these alum treatments we do, it doesn't really do any good. In fact, it seems to actually be making things worse, at least on Lake Lawrence. What to do, my suggestion, and especially on my lake, which is the water supply for Thurston County, that we not use any pesticides in the McAllister Springs geosensitive area, which is South Lake, everything south of the railroad trestle, and that we remove the weeds with a harvester and take them away so the nutrients aren't still there for more stuff to grow, and that, or we use bottom screening so that we don't allow any growth on the bottom. There's plenty of clean ways to do this. Why would we want to use any kind of pesticides? And who's going to decide now that Mr. Gelder is wrong?
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. Mr. Pettit up.
My name's John Pettit. I live out on Rich Road, East Olympia. Welcome to 2025. You know, I obviously have been watching, and I'm going to continue to watch. I find it to be a really good opportunity to participate in the system. And of course, I usually watch numbers. And one of the numbers I saw that comes up is something you can find online. It's the Thurston County Treasurer, County in Debt Outstanding Valid through January 31, 2025. $107,223,587. In my memory, that's the highest the county debt has ever been. Now, of that debt, in 2022, there was an amount left of $45,800,000 that was going to be for fixing up the existing courthouse. In fact, the county even decided to take a action against me for appealing that process of even going, and then I had heart surgery, never got to do anything. But the county retaliated because I took action and have never cleared the particular issue on that. So, I'll probably have to take an action regarding the action that was taken against me. That being said, currently, the 48, 45 million sum, that's costing the county $6,200 a day in interest. The 24 bond that just got started, that's costing the county $4,000 a day in interest. This building that we shouldn't even be in is costing the county $7,000 a day in interest. I mean, not interest, but rent payment. Now, all of that being said, when you're spending lots of money on things, I saw a new particular thing coming out that we want to cut back on the courthouse renovation process, so we're only going to spend 5.4 million. The interest doesn't go away on those bonds. We still got to pay it. The fact is, is those bonds were taken for a very specific purpose. And now it appears that you want to turn those bonds into something other than what it was written to be spent on. The other part of this issue follows up with this last one, which is a $28 million bond, portion to go to the auditors program, but a portion to go to potentially buying us new sheriff's office. It's now being proposed you're going to build a new courthouse. Why would you spend $20 million on a building and the remodel combined for something that you're going to turn around and build a new facility for the county, when by law, the sheriff's office has to be located at the courthouse? You know, I'm suggesting a major pause in the thinking because it's not making a lot of sense. There is also a point which I would bring up in regards to the fact that a lot of times, there's claims that you want to be, that you're financially responsible. You know, to cut it short, and I'm not going to talk about the HCP, but it needs to go away. But to cut it short, my wife, when we first got married about 20 years ago, she's Chinese, and so she was never used to the idea of people saying, "I love you" type thing back and forth all the time. She says, "Don't tell me. Show me." So, what I'd like for the county commissioners to do is don't tell me that you're financially doing great. Don't tell me that you're having transparency. Show me. That's what all of us citizens want. And we want more involvement, watching and being involved, not just being represented, but representing our viewpoints. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment, but did not get an opportunity to sign up? Nope, I don't see anyone on Zoom, so we move on to the next piece, which is county managers update.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. We just would like to give a, provide an update that before Mr. Gelder left, we were able to meet with Public Health and Environmental Services. Is that it? Environmental Health? Environmental Health, yes. As a team to talk about the continued staff support for the Lake Management Districts and was very thankful from Mr. Gelder, who quickly got a meeting together with some of, but not all, some of the representatives from the Lake Management Districts on Friday with public health staff. And so, while we will be looking to fill the Assistant County Manager position, we are working on a bridge plan with staff support, which also includes one of the staff members who's been hand-in-hand working with Mr. Gelder from Environmental Health. And so, we're looking to make sure that's a priority for continuity there. Other than that, I don't have any updates.
Questions from the Board? Okay, thank you. We'll go to our consent agenda. We have items A through F, 4A through 4F. Any requests from the Commissioner to remove an item from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented on the agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve items 4A through 4F. It's a non-debatable motion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That brings us to Department Items. 5A is Central Services. Contract award for Thurston County camera security system upgrades.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Thomas Tremke. I'm capital project manager for Central Services. We're seeking authorization for the interim director of Central Services to execute a contract with D. Pelkey Holdings DBA Corrections Technology Group, an amount of $1,560,000 to install and upgrade the camera systems at the Thurston County Corrections Facility and Family Juvenile Court. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the Board? Been working on this for a while, so this is kind of a final piece, not final piece, but important final piece of a project that's been needed for a while. If there's no questions, ready for motion?
I move to award a contract for the 25F-10TCCF and 25633FJC Camera Security System Upgrades to D. Pelkey Holdings DBA Corrections Technology Group out of Spokane, for a total amount of $1,560,000, and authorize the interim director of Central Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the contract award to D. Pelkey Holdings. Can you start on that motion?
I have a couple things. I checked out the AIS info for this item, and I just was wondering if the FJC cameras, I think most of the Commissioners toured the FJC and checked out some of their systems. And I was wondering if this is related to the other issues that we talked about, because I know the FJC needs a lot of work. And so, it looks like the funding was split, most of it. About $1,48,000 was going to the Thurston County Corrections Facility and about $511,000 going to FJC. And I was just wondering if this will be for FJC a phased approach or a one-time expense, or is this just totally not related to the other issues about like the doors and those systems?
Well, it's camera and security system, so it's addressing the doors, intercoms, cameras, all in together, and getting a new control panel to operate those items.
Okay. And so, the $500,000 amount will be enough to cover all of that, or do you think that this will come before us again for a second phase or an additional expenditure?
Right now, I believe this is enough to cover it.
Okay. Thank you.
Of the items I'm aware of.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I was wondering if you could just say for the public, if you're aware, how much this amount is compared to the estimate, because it looks like it's under what we estimated for it. So, I just thought it would be good for the public to know that the bid we accepted was lower than what we estimated.
Yes. And on that, that was our total project construction cost, including staff, design, and everything. Actually, the design cost is like 3.3 million, or the construction estimate is 3.3 million, and we're in here at 1.5. I confirmed with the vendor that his number's good. He believes he's confident that he can do all, send the drawings and specifications for that price.
That's great. Thank you. That's a big difference from what we estimated. So, I just want to thank staff for your work on securing that bid for something so important.
If I remember correctly, we, when we were trying to figure out how to deal with the crisis issue at the juvenile facility, we were, part of it was to kind of restructure it together to kind of get an efficiency of scale, to by combining it with the work needed at the
Yes.
Major correction.
We were able to jump on with some work that was already contracted to be done at the
And that helped, that cost a little bit.
Yes.
But it sounded like the big team were under this. That's awesome. Okay, good deal.
Yeah. My comments, I want to say thank you to you and the FJC staff. This was something that came up at the beginning of the year. Last year, and it was a big issue, it was a safety issue for the staff and for the offenders or the juveniles, the justice-involved youth at the FJC. So, you know, it's kind of exciting to like actually get something done in government. We appreciate the hard work, and then the Commissioners pushing this forward. I know the FJC is going to be excited.
I think it was two, we were originally saying 2 million just to fix the youth facility.
Yes.
And so, yeah, so this is a big
And they were using hand cranks to open doors, and so this is a big, big step.
Yes.
I also want to take a time to really thank staff because they really have been proactive on this project. They've been thinking outside the box. And I know Tom has joined me in this hectic Friday, trying to submit a federal grant for it, to Congresswoman Strickland. So, I know they've been working really hard to try to find additional funds for this and making sure that this came to completion. I'm really excited that it came kind of below the estimate. But just thank you, Thomas, for all your work on this.
I'd just like to remind everybody that justice-involved youth, they are 30% of our, what is it, 30% of our population, but 100% of our future.
Thank you, Commissioner Fornia. Appreciate it.
There it is. I got my Edwardism in.
It's now 2020.
It'll be a sign on a weekly basis, Commissioner, so I appreciate you. All right. Is there, we had the motion, and yeah, we're in discussion, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Moving on to Item 6A, Public Health and Social Services. Professional Services Contract with the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association. Season long. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Season long Environmental Health Division Director, Public Health and Social Services. Today, PHSS is requesting the Board approve the professional service contract with the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and amendments that do not exceed 10%, and further authorize the Director or designee to approve payments of invoices to Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association contractors and vendors as set forth in the professional service contract, up to the total amount of Washington State Department of Ecology grant funding of $957,965.70. A little context for this professional service contract. Last year, the Board executed two grant agreements with Washington State Department of Ecology to replace 55 septic connections in the Lost Lake community. This professional service contract delegates project management authority to the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association or subcontractors to perform activities related to the replacement of these septic systems, including but not limited to overseeing the public bid process, hiring and managing the septic installer, and ensuring the project complies with the terms and conditions outlined in the two water quality grant agreements. And I'm open to questions.
Questions on 6A? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to approve the professional services contract with Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and amendments that do not exceed 10%, and further authorize the Director or designee to approve payment of invoices to Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association's contractors and vendors as set forth in the professional service contract, up to the total amount of the Washington State Department of Ecology grant funding of $957,965.70.
Second.
Motion in second to approve a professional services contract with Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association. Any discussion on that motion? Nope, hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public Works is next, 7A. Resolution for temporary closure of Little Rock Road Southwest at the crossing of Blooms Ditch.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Can you raise that up if you need to?
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Keaton Forbes-Kashani. I'm a senior civil engineer with Thurston County Public Works. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners move to approve the resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Little Rock Road Southwest at the crossing of Blooms Ditch for a single time period not to exceed 12 weeks, within the time period of July 1st, 2025, and October 1st, 2025. The purpose of this closure is to accommodate the L5 bridge replacement as part of County Project 61320. Little Rock Road Southwest and 113th Avenue Southwest intersection improvements and L5 bridge replacement. Due to right-of-way constraints and fish-window limitations, temporarily closing the road is the safest, least expensive, and quickest option to successfully replace the bridge. Travelers of Little Rock Road Southwest will follow a designated detour route along 113th Avenue Southwest, Case Road Southwest, and 93rd Avenue Southwest. This section of Little Rock Road has an average daily traffic of 7,000 vehicles per day at Blooms Ditch. The total detour length is 7.5 miles and will take approximately 12 to 15 minutes. This is the same detour route that was used in 2014 for the replacement of Thurston County's L4 bridge just north of this current project. A communication plan to notify stakeholders such as local residents, emergency responders, and school districts will be prepared and implemented as soon as possible. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Keaton? Nope, ready for motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Little Rock Road Southwest at the crossing of Blooms Ditch for a single time period not to exceed 12 weeks, within the time period of July 1st, 2025 through October 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the resolution for temporary closure. Any discussion on the motion?
Have we gotten any public comment related to this item at all? Like any written comments? I haven't seen any, but I know we have a lot of public comments come in, and it's possible that we may have missed some. Are we aware of any?
We have not received any public comments.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
No other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up is Public Works 7B. Contract award for Gate Belmore Trail Glacial Heritage Phase One Project. Ben Enfield, correction.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Ben Enfield, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works Design Engineering Division. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to move to award the construction contract for Gate Belmore Trail Glacial Heritage to R.L. Alea Company of Renton, Washington, in the amount of $1,084,840, and to authorize the Public Works Director to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions for up to 10% of the contract value. On December 5th, a total of 16 bids were received. The low-responsive bid was received from R.L. Alea Company with a bid of $1,084,840. This project will pave approximately 2.7 miles of trail on a decommissioned railroad grade. The trail will be approximately 10 feet wide and will accommodate non-motorized use. It will include a paved access point and parking area with up to 21 parking stalls. And this is the first phase of the Gate Belmore Trail project. Future phases will extend the trail from Grand Mound all the way to Olympia. The total estimated construction cost, including contract award and construction management, is 1.5 million, with funds coming from real estate excise tax and parks impact fees. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Talked about that this morning. None, ready for motion.
Move to award the contract for the Gate Belmore Trail Glacial Heritage Phase One Project, CP number 51110, to R.L. Alea Company of Renton, Washington, in the amount of $1,084,840, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, for up to 10% of the contract, or $108,484, or an aggregate of $1,193,324.
Second.
$324?
Yeah.
I messed that one up. $1,193,324.
One million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So we have a second on that, motion second, is there a discussion on the motion?
I have one question. Do we know, I didn't see in the AIS packet, how much of this is coming from REIT and how much is coming from Park Impact These?
I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
And this, in case if folks are hearing about this for the first time, I can't remember if it ends or it begins. I think it ends near the Glacier Heritage Park, which is open on Prairie Appreciation Day in May.
Yep, the, yeah, the trail starts just south of Glacier Heritage Preserve and it ends to the north. This section of it.
Okay, so heading, yeah, that's what I was imagining. And then, so that's something that in the future, people will be able to.
Yeah, that'll be, it'll be, the access that crosses the, this trail project.
If anybody wants to see the trails plan the county has, where can they find that?
I believe we have that on our, our project planning page.
Okay, the post-plan?
Yep.
Which is what it's called, Parks, I don't want to get the acronym wrong.
Open Spaces and Trails?
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty comprehensive document that goes through all properties of the county and different amenities that we provide and what the plans are for the future.
Yeah, it'll be a great, it'll be a great project when it is all complete.
Just for historical context, I just wanted to add that this was a discussion we had two years ago. And it was, we were discussing between this and we talked about the Tenino, Yelm-Tenino Green Year Trail as well, and we did a little expansion on that and then talking about this. So I'm excited to finally see this coming through and this getting worked on because I remember having that conversation on how we were going to allocate funding for those two projects and kind of splitting them out and seeing if we could afford both of them. So really excited that we're starting the phase one of this project.
Okay. We have a motion in second, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Imposed. Motion carries. Thank you. At the end of the business items, we have time for Commissioner Reports and I'll, I guess I'll look to Commissioner Clough.
I have nothing to report.
Grant, what have you been doing your first day?
My first day.
Day and a half.
I actually wrote something, so I will write that, read it if my glasses. All right, but yeah, I'm really excited to have started that just last week. So I've not even been here a full week yet, but have already met with the constituent and with the director and the CFO of the behavioral health organization, the BHASO. Also have already started meeting with people throughout the county. So I'm really excited to have met with Jen Freihide of the Board of Health and John Toonheim, our prosecutor. And I'm really excited I have a badge officially so I can get into the building. And so, and then just want to say a special thank you to all the county staff who have stopped by and introduced themselves, and you're all welcome too. I'm really excited to start getting to some of these commission meetings. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Closing my garage door. Technology. I attended, since our last meeting, I attended the shared legislative dinner meeting where we had a kind of a big roundtable. I've never been to one of those before, it was cool, big roundtable discussion with our legislative delegation and went over the chambers. It's the shared legislative agenda, but it's kind of led by the Thurston County Chamber of Commerce. And we went over some of the issues that they see as important for our region with our legislative delegation. And then I attended the three cities meeting that same week. And in that, we talked about various municipalities' budgets. We talked also about the shared legislative agenda and the issues that are on there. We talked about regional corrections. And there is, again, there's a continued appetite amongst the various jurisdictions to have a kind of a global conversation with the county about what the future of kind of regional law and justice would look like and how we could work together to kind of plan out and regionalize our court systems and our law and justice system. And I think that's something that needs to be on kind of one of the front burners of the county. We talked about regional animal control and their facility needs. And then we had a brief discussion about vehicle pursuits that led to us wanting to make sure we invite the sheriff to the next three cities meeting to have a more robust discussion.
Thank you. For me, I attended intercity transit, we approved the budget. We are still ongoing with negotiations for our operators. Attended the behavioral health meeting and I gave a report this morning on that. Attended the Board of Health Executive Meeting. I also attended the Legislative Steering Committee Co-Chair Meeting. And I'm sure Commissioner Mansour will be happy to know I'm bringing up the conversation about pop-ups again in terms of talking about expansions, and those are for restaurant pop-ups. So I will be bringing it up later on. I'm working on another plan just based on information that I learned over. So that will be something exciting. And other than that, I think I reported a lot of what I was working on over the break this morning, so.
Yeah, I had a flurry of activity at the tail end of December. My phone got reset and now that list is gone. So I can just say I did a whole bunch of stuff that last week in December. As of, and I was gone for a little while. And then this week, all I've been, all I've done other than catch up is went to a ribbon cutting with the chamber for a new business over on, in my district near the, it's called Amber and Aloe, and it's right near the Humble Cow Creamery.
New tanning salon.
Yeah, it was a great turnout for their, for their ribbon cutting, so that was great. So we've got obviously a lot of business before us here as we get started in 2025. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.